Let call the meeting order, please. We have a roll call.
Alderman Austin.
Here.
Alderman Clark.
Here.
Alderman Mayberry.
Here.
Alderman Foley.
Here.
Alderman Talonier.
Here.
Alderman Hodl.
Here.
Alderman Ship.
Here.
Mayor Pauli.
Here.
Call, please stand for the pledge followed by the invocation by Alderman Foley.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stand. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for bringing us all together today during the peaceful transition of power here in the city of Rock Island. Please look and guide over our current council members as and also for our new council members as they go on to lead the city and the people of Rock Island. In your name we pray, amen.
The minutes of the meeting of April 17th, 2017.
Move to approve the minutes as printed.
Second.
The second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion approved. Item number six.
Minutes of the executive sessions of January 16th, 2017, February 13th, 2017, February 20th, 2017, March 6th, 2017, March 20th, 2017, April 3rd, 2017, and April 17th, 2017.
Motion to approve the executive session minutes.
Second.
Motion is a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Talonier.
Yes.
Hodl.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Motion approved. Next item is update Rock Island, I have five items for tonight. First item is the Rock Island Myland School District, number 41 will be holding kindergarten roundup for the 2017-2018 school year on Wednesday, May 3rd. Children must, children must five years old or honored before September 1st, 2017 in order to attend kindergarten. For school boundary information and other requirements, please visit www.rockislandschools.org or call 309-793-5995. Second item, the Rock Island Public Library will offer a free program, Spring Gardening with Craig Hignight on Wednesday, May 3rd, 2017, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM at the main library community room, 401 19th Street. Kick off your spring season with one of the Quad City's foremost gardening experts and get answers to your questions and learn from Craig's knowledge. The event is free and for more information, please call 309-732-7323. What do 40 downtown Rock Island businesses and organizations have in common? They want you to know slash tag what's up downtown Rock Island. They're opening their doors to welcome residents to explore and learn all about the exciting things going on in our downtown area. From special sales to door prizes to refreshments and more, there are plenty of reasons to pack the downtown sidewalks on Saturday, May 6th from 12:00 to 4:00 PM. Gallery Hop, the district of midcoast fine arts present Gallery Hop Friday, May 5th from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. An open house in downtown Rock Island, Gallery Hop showcases local artists in over 20 locations that include galleries, restaurants, shops, and hotspots in downtown Rock Island. It's fun, casual, and it's where you can find unforgettable items for yourself, that someone special, and don't forget mom. Jewelry, photography, woodwork, glass, paintings, book signings, sculpture, and performance art will all be featured. Talk with the artist, indulge your senses, shop and watch live demonstrations. And finally, on Sunday, May 7th, the Rock Island Parks and Recreation Department will hold a plant sale at Longview Park at the corner of 18th Avenue and 17th Street. Shop for bulbs, ornamental grasses, perennials, annuals, and more to benefit the city's beautification projects. The sale will take place from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. For more information, please call 732-7275. Let's update Rock Island for this week. Next, we have a proclamation declaring May 17th as Bike Month, and who's going to be accepting that? Anybody? There we go, Chuck. I'll read it to you then, let you have some comments there and bring it out to you. Okay, whereas a bicycle is an economical, healthy, convenient, environmentally sound form of transportation and recreation, whereas throughout the month of May, the residents of Rock Island and its visitors will experience the joys of bicycling through educational programs, races, commuting events, charity events, or by simply getting out and going for a ride. Whereas Rock Island's road and trail system attracts bicyclists each year, providing economic health, transportation, tourism, and scenic benefits. Whereas creating a bicycle-friendly community has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, growing the economy of Rock Island, attracting tourism dollars, improving traffic safety, supporting student learning outcomes, and reducing pollution, congestion, and wear and tear on our streets and roads. Whereas the League of American Bicyclists, schools, parks, and recreation departments, police departments, public health districts, hospitals, companies, and civic groups were promoting bicycling through the month of May 2017. And whereas these groups are promoting bicycle tourism year-round to attract more visitors to enjoy our local restaurants, hotels, retail establishments, cultural and scenic attractions. Whereas these groups are also promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce collisions, injuries, and fatalities, and improve health and safety for everyone on the road. Now therefore, I Dennis C. Pauli, Mayor of the city of Rock Island, proclaim May 17th as Bike Month in the city of Rock Island, and I urge all residents to join me in this special observance. Chuck, you have comments? Well, I gotta hurry up out there then. Thank you for making, thank you for doing all you do for bicycle awareness. Okay, our next proclamation is Building Safety Month, and I think that's Tom Ayers and Chief Yurkey gonna come up together? Okay, whereas our city is committed to strong growth and our citizens depend on the safety and economic value of our homes, building an infrastructure that serve our citizens both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster. Whereas our confidence in the structural integrity of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safety, construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, worship, play. And whereas our nation benefits economically and technologically from using the international codes that are developed by a national voluntary consensus, codes and standards developing organization, our government is able to avoid the high cost and complexity of developing and maintaining these codes, which are the most widely adopted building safety codes and fire prevention codes in the nation. Whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our communities, largely unknown guardians of public safety, our local code officials who assures of safe, efficient, and livable buildings that are essential to keep America great. And whereas code officials, partners in community safety and economic growth, the theme for Building Safety Month 2017 encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, and new technologies in the construction industry. Building Safety Month 2017 encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure that the places where we live, learn, work, worship, and play are safe, and recognizes that countless lives have been saved due to the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies. And whereas each year at observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider the commitment to building, to improve building safety and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by our local building, by our local building department, fire department, and public works department, in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I Dennis C. Pauli, Mayor of the city of Rock Island, proclaim May 17th as Building Safety Month.
Thank you, Mayor. As the proclamation noted, it, teamwork amongst everyone, from the owners to the designers, the people who actually do the work, the fire department, public works, and the inspectors. And we appreciate very much your proclamation and have a weekly theme that I think most people will find interesting as we progress through the month.
Item 10, A through D.
Move to accept reports and authorize payments as recommended.
Second.
Motion is a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Talonier.
Yes.
Hodl.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Motion approved. Item 11.
Claims for the week of April 14th through April 20th in the amount of $655,183.99 and for the week of April 21st through April 27th in the amount of $650,914.84 in payroll for the weeks of April 10th through April 23rd in the amount of $1,472,673.06.
Motion to allow the claims in payroll?
Second.
The motion is a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Talonier.
Yes.
Hodl.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Motion approved. Item 12.
ACH payments for the month of March in the amount of $976,784.84.
Move to approve the ACH payments.
Second.
Motion is a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Talonier.
Yes.
Hodl.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Motion approved. Item 13.
Purchase card claims for the period from February 28th through March 27th, 2017 in the amount of $51,987.34.
Move to approve the purchase card claims.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Talonier.
Yes.
Hodl.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Motion approved. Council members, other business.
All right, I think that's me. Alderman Foley wants me to go first. And you're all gonna have to bear with me a little bit. I, I had intended to prepare a speech for tonight, but you know, life sometimes gets in the way, and I think it's more fitting for me to speak off the cuff because there's a lot of familiar faces in the room, and you've gotten to know me over the last four years, and I think you've learned that I usually shoot from the hip, and I'm pretty direct, straightforward, and honest, and speak from the heart, so that's what I'm gonna do. I know you're all patiently waiting for the real show to begin, to swear in the new council, but this is my last opportunity, so it may be a little long-winded, I'm just gonna say that in advance. But I want, I have quite a few comments that I would like to say. When I, when I decided to run for city council four years ago, and it's hard to believe that four years came and went as quickly as it did, I think my parents thought I was a little crazy, and they, are you sure you want to commit to doing this for four years? You're 25 years old, you just got, you know, only been out of school a couple years. And I wasn't that sure. But what I was sure about was that Rock Island was my home, and that I knew that it needed improvements, and it needed young leadership and vision on the city council, and that I thought that I could provide that, and in a way that was passionate and really about making the lives of all the people in this room better. And I can't say that in four years I accomplished really anything that maybe I thought I was gonna accomplish or work towards accomplishing, but I am proud of the time that I served here mainly because of the work I got to do with all of these people, and mainly because of the amount of people in this city that I got to know. Because Rock Island is truly an incredible community, and it's a testament to, we have born and raised Rock Island citizens, mostly on this council, Rock Island Public School graduates, and we've come back and tried to serve our community and make it a better place. And I do believe the best is yet to come in Rock Island's future. The thing I'm probably most proud about is the staff that we formed in the last four years. All of you live in Rock Island, you know it has not been an easy four years, probably one of the most politically difficult years for the city itself since my time on the council, but we came out of it, and we came out of it together and stronger and better. We have probably some of the best staff, I don't know, on the planet. I was, I've been kind of sentimental and bragging to them tonight about how much I'm gonna miss them, and they're back there in the room, and I don't want to get emotional about it, but they truly are just top-notch people. Most of you don't know them personally, haven't gotten to know them, but know that our chief, our police chief and our fire chief, they're keeping you as safe as you could possibly be anywhere else. And the rest of our staff in public works and CED and every other department, even our finance department that a lot of you don't think about, our finance director is incredible, and our parks and our library, they are truly what make our city work, and it has been beyond an honor to serve with all of you, really to serve for you, because you do an incredible job every day, and these people are really lucky, really lucky to have you. And I'm really honored to have had the opportunity to get to know you and to now have a relationship with all of you. I will say that probably the most bittersweet thing about knowing when I leave tonight is that there won't be any females replacing any of the seats on the city council. And for the last two years, I've been the only woman on the city council, and not that I think it's about gender, but I think it's incredibly important to have a diverse representation. And I will say out there right now, there's a lot of women in the room, I don't care where you fall on the political spectrum, because that's not what this city and this body is about. I would help support you if you have an interest in running for city council anytime, because we do need to see women in leadership and being involved so that we have representation across our whole community, because look at this room. And we need to have people from all walks of life, all backgrounds, and all perspectives, because today I think that's what we're missing in government. It's all about getting everybody to agree, one side or the other, instead of recognizing that actually a diverse group of people with different ideas, different opinions, coming together and finding middle ground makes the strongest government. And I would hope to see that happen in Rock Island's future. And with that, I would also like to comment that I have to say I wasn't involved in the campaign process because I wasn't running for city council, but I was sad to see actually how partisan and how divisive our local elections were. Our state, our country has been ripped apart because of partisan politics, and this is a nonpartisan body, and a lot of people that are in partisan politics would disagree with me and say, no, every political office is partisan, but that's not true. It's not true at all. Because all of us in the room live in Rock Island, we all care about Rock Island, and we have a lot of common goals that have nothing to do with being a Democrat or a Republican. And when you take the oath of office tonight, your nameplate won't have either of those labels on it. It'll have your ward, and it'll have your name, and that's what you're here to represent. So I would say that I, I want to see the body that gets up here tonight not take that perspective as they come into office, because that's not what this city is gonna be about, and that's not what's gonna move our city forward. I had the opportunity, our editor-in-chief of our paper had asked me to weigh in about being a young adult in elected office. I thought it was going to be a collective piece, I thought he might interview some other people too, or who are young millennials in office, but it ended up mainly being almost like an editorial from my perspective. But I, I got to sit down and think about what advice I would give to people incoming that was geared towards millennials. I know we have at least one millennial replacing me on the council, but some of the points that, that I shared I think are good for, for all of our new members that are getting elected and our members that are returning, and I'd like to share some of those. So for the new members, yes, you're new, you may not have as much influence or, or power as some of the current aldermen, but you were still elected here, so know that you've earned the right and that your voice does matter, and that just because you're new doesn't mean you can't play that role. And you will have to prove yourself, but everyone else does too. So don't get caught up on thinking that you have to try that much harder than everyone else in office. I'm trying to edit these a little bit based on, based on age. Challenge yourself to be more informed than the most experienced colleagues, because it is your job to be informed on issues, on every issue. And you have a very educated staff that will give you all the information and way more than you could possibly ever read or understand. Believe me, it's a lot. I have a lot of recycled materials every single week, and fortunately, we kind of went paperless for a while, which has been good. Focus on the fact that you are there to serve, and although it may feel like it sometimes, it's not about you. We see this way too many times in politics, we saw this plenty, quite frankly, in the election cycle. I've seen that happen in this room with this body. And the minute that you think that only you matter in your seat and that you're actually not replaceable, that you're really just a servant, the minute that you've already stopped being a public servant. So every day, try to remind yourself that you're not up here because you're any better than anybody else that could run, you're here to serve your ward, you're here to serve your city, and please remember that. Expect that you will be frustrated at times and won't accomplish everything you want, but you don't have time to pout when you lose a battle, because there's always more work to do and more battles ahead. This is something Alderman Talonier is always very good at, whoop, I lost, gotta move on. Don't get caught up on getting in a disagreement or an argument with a colleague, because in nonpartisan politics and local elections, your enemy one week might be your best friend the next week, because I've seen Alderman on this council that could not be more different vote the same on, on a split issue. Listen at least as much and ideally more than you talk. Normally, I don't talk this much. I do talk a lot, but usually it's not this much, but it's my last meeting. Listening is, is how you do your job best in public service, and that's to everybody. That's to your peers on the council, that's to staff, that's to the, the person that shows up to every meeting and calls you every week, and also the person that you never hear from, because those are more common than the people who call you all the time. Build relationships with your colleagues, because even if you can't get them to agree with you on much, believe me, it's more enjoyable if you can at least get along and be friends while you're working together, even if you don't agree on anything. Give only one ear each to criticism and praise. Criticism can keep you humble and help you be better, but listening to too much of it isn't healthy for your state of mind. You'll get plenty of it, I think those of you that ran know that, none of you are completely inexperienced in politics, and it can be very hard. For me especially, I, I care very much about people in this community. Probably the hardest vote I had to make was, one of the hardest votes was on the crematorium issue about a year ago, wasn't even in my ward, but we had people legitimately in tears, upset, scared for their families, but I just didn't agree with them. And I was in tears at the meeting, because I felt so bad about the vote I had to make. But don't let that criticism affect your decision-making, because you have to try to remove your emotions from the choices that you make here on the council, because when you make a decision that affects 38,000 people, you can't do it based on how you feel on the issue, it has to be on what you think is the best overall for the city. Praise can energize you and keep you pushing forward, but listening to only that will inflate your ego. You're all, you all have, you all have people that will support you, that will agree with you on every issue, please don't only talk to them, because you will not be a very good alderman or mayor if, if you do that. Surround yourself with people that will give you constructive criticism, that will question your stances on issues, because that will help you be a better leader. And last, I'm almost done, I know everyone's getting a little, a little tired of listening to me. Recognize that it is a privilege to serve and have the ability to help your community, so work hard, work really hard, and enjoy every minute of it, because it does go really fast. I thought four years was an eternity, there were times where I didn't think I was gonna make it through all four years, but I did, and it went so, so quickly, and I can't believe that it's over. I just want to say one last time, thank you to Alderman Clark, Mayberry, Foley, Talonier, our, our former public works director and our interim city manager, Randy, Mayor Pauli, Alicia Patchen, who's not here, our city clerk, and our new city clerk, Judith, Dave, Alderman Ship, Alderman Austin, Alderman Murphy, and Alderman Conroy, who I also served with, and all the staff members and business owners and constituents, people who supported me, but also questioned me and pushed me to be better. Thank you, it's been an honor to work with all of you. I definitely will miss it, and I, everyone that keeps asking me what I'm doing next, I truly have no clue, I'm, I'm still around, I have a long career ahead of me, and I don't know where it's gonna take me, I'm putting that in God's hands and seeing where the course goes, so thank you, thank you all very much.
Wow, Kate, that's a...
Sorry.
I have to teach class for four hours tomorrow night, so I'll be, I won't be, I'm just giving you a hard time, Kate. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, I have a few prepared remarks, nothing too extensive, and just kind of want to recollect just a few years of 2009 when I was elected, and before that, I've been raised and reared here in the west end of Rock Island, growing up just mere three to four blocks west of here where the old St. Joe's Catholic Church was. Used to get to play frisbee with the nuns in the parking lot, who, and went to school at Jordan, then on into Allemann, and then to St., Blackhawk, and then on to St. Ambrose, which always, my parents, being the youngest of four, my father owned a business, my mom was administrator at Franciscan, then on into whatever a few names it was, then to Trinity. And my parents and my family always instilled an ethic of service in my, in my life, being the youngest of the four children. And that was something that they always instilled in myself and in my siblings and everything we did and every day. And so it is kind of a natural, and I wish my father, who passed away over 20 years ago, could see me here in this position tonight, because, or the past, the past eight years, helping to make decisions to move this city forward and this region forward. And it was always kind of neat to see my father involved in many different things, and also my mother. I want to get back to April 7th, 2009, when I was first elected, and I was so excited, I wasn't even here, I was in my wife's hospital room in downtown Chicago. And as I get very, a little emotional about it, I was excited, but also very nervous for her, and, and what was to come in front of her, in front of our family, the following day, as she was having a stem cell transplant for a debilitating disease called scleroderma that she had. Life, it didn't look too exciting at that time, didn't look like we, we had a good future, and at that point, the next day, 18 hours after my election, where she received her own stem cells back, and eventually becoming, having the number one results of any patient in the, in the world with her type of disease and her lung capacity coming back, and all due to the grace of God and prayers of many, and to, you know, my fellow council members at the time, as I came on, it was a tough journey for the first six months to, to be young, to be 32 years old, to try and learn a, you know, to have my current role at St. Ambrose, but then at the same time, trying to become a city council member and also to be there to help take care of my wife. And at one point, I didn't even want to run, and she really encouraged me, leading up to, to that, that I really should run and go for it. And I think back and I thank her over and over again for, for her encouragement, and it's so exciting to see where she is today, as the corporate marketing director for KJWW here, I make corp in the west end of Rock Island, and her health is just doing so great. And I think back eight years later in 2017 and where we're at, we, at that point in 2009, we had a small little golden doodle by the name of Smidick, and in 2010, he's still there, and gets to go for walks with us every day. At the time, I can't thank enough of my former council members at the time, and I've talked to them all today, Terry Brooks, who I tried to get ahold of, but I couldn't reach, Dave Conroy, and Joy Murphy, who I spoke to today, and thanked them for all their wisdom and encouragement they gave me. Always said that Alderman Talonier, always said that Alderman David Conroy was a statesman, and he really was a statesman, and I said that to him on the phone today, and thanked him for all the different things he, he helped me look at, look at. I always felt I had a good relationship with many of the staff, and today, going around kind of city hall this morning, wrapping up loose ends and seeing staff and, and talking to them as well, and also many of my constituents, and many individuals who I've had long conversations with. And having a good Irish wit, strong Irish temper, always led to some very interesting conversations with my fellow city council colleagues and officials from other cities at times. One thing I always firmly believed that, you know, when individuals would speak out, I always asked them to be respectful, but when individuals would speak out here on controversial issues and, and make extreme accusations towards the council of hiding information or lying, and, and even making fun of fellow council members and the mayor, I really took it to heart, and I always felt I was the bulldog of the council to go after those individuals to correct, to make a correction in their behavior and their talk. Because the individuals out in the social media world that make those comments and don't know what's going on and are always out there to make that, I want to make sure, and I hope there's other individuals as council moves forward. and are always out there to make that, I want to make sure, and I hope there's other individuals as council moves forward. You know, we have many challenges in Rock Island, but we have also a lot of opportunities. And what I saw in Washington DC last week, you know, people give Rock Island a hard time. And I saw three young women out there in a room on Capitol Hill, Alderwoman Hodle, County Board Member Mia Mayberry, who's also an attorney, and then also Ally Field, who was number one in her class, along with Mia Mayberry, wrote at Yale, and was a merit scholar. And I saw those three women in a crowd of about 40 to 50 individuals from the Quad Cities, and I was so proud, and I told them all that, how proud I was to see that, because everybody thinks it's other communities here in the Quad Cities. And there, Rock Island was being represented on Capitol Hill by three successful women. And I'm very proud of that, and their families as well. YouTube. There've been many ups and downs during my eight-year career, but I felt good of trying to help move Rock Island forward, especially my ward. With renovations and expansions of Unity Point Trinity, that's a place that I grew up at every day, going to, when I, leaving Jordan and walking over, waiting for my mom to get off work. Friendship Manor, having a great relationship with and helping to stabilize the neighborhood and working with them on expansion. Having over three and a half miles of roads being completed and redone from the high school area to the Watch Hill area, I've been proud to represent the city of Rock Island and the community and beyond. I look forward to Alderman-elect James Spurgettis coming on. I've worked with him over the past three weeks and think the Third Ward will be in great hands, and have told him if he wants to call me for advice, please, otherwise I'm going off into the sunset for, in hiding. One last couple things. People have asked me if I'll miss being on council and if I'll stay involved. My answer, my answer to this is I've made a lot of lifelong friends here along the way. At some point, I may serve on a border commission, but now I'm focused, continue to focus on my full-time job as Government Affairs Director at St. Ambrose, and also teaching some of my political science classes and training for my second marathon in Dublin, Ireland, October 29, 2017. I know my wife is already talking about house projects as well, but I'm not that handy, so we'll see. As I end my eight-year tenure tonight, I hearken back to a great song called "The Parting Glass." Comes from 1700s in Ireland and used for when someone leaves family or friends for the last time on their next journey. I won't sing it to you like General Martin Dempsey did. Tom Ayers, our Inspection Director, knows General Dempsey. They went to the academy together at West Point, and he was in the Glee Club. But when General Dempsey retired as the Chairman of the Joint Chiefs, he sang the song. A very proud Irish heritage, he was from New York. I won't sing it, but I'll just say the words here, as an Irishman or leaving his friends one last time. "Of all the money that ere I had, I spent it in good company. And all the harm that ere I've gone, I've done, at last it was none but to me. And all I've done for want of wit, to memory now I can't recall. So fill to me the parting glass. Good night and joy be to you all. For all the comrades that ere I had, they are sorry for my going away. And all the memories that ere I had, they wish me one more day to stay. But since it fell unto my lot, then I should rise and you should not. I will gently rise and I'll softly call. Good night and joy be to you all. Thank you."
I'm just gonna take a minute. I was not 100% certain that I would be able to be here tonight, so I shared some thoughts at the end of the meeting, the last meeting we had here. I'm thankful that the Argus Dispatch chose to run them in the paper, and so that those of you who had the opportunity to read them, that was my, hopefully my way to say thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Any other aldermen have comments? If not, it's my turn. No, I'm not gonna talk for an hour. For those of you that know me, you know that I do not do long speeches. I'm very brief, and this is gonna be, I said two minutes, maybe it's gonna be three minutes, but it won't be any more than that. I mean, for me, I am just extremely honored. I was an alderman for four years. I've been a mayor for the last eight years. I'm just extremely, extremely honored to be able to have served the citizens of Rock Island. I'm as equally as honored to work with the fine people that have been around this table, the people that are on this table tonight. The staff, as Kate had said, the staff is second to none. They are fantastic. I mean, I think Randy Tweed has stepped into a very difficult job and done an excellent job at it, and I hope to see him here doing it in the future, because he is extremely good at it. I am very, very proud of being able to build the new police station. I think that was a fantastic effort. We cleaned up the downtown, but nobody does it alone. It's all done as a unit. We've all had to work together. And as some of the aldermen have said, sometimes you agree with the vote, sometimes you don't agree with the vote. We've covered every issue from crematorium to chickens, and you have extremely passionate people on all issues. I mean, we had some very long meetings talking about chickens. And we had some very long meetings about the Humberg, about the crematorium, about the fire station down by Douglas Park. And if you can see Douglas Park now, they're really starting to renovate it. It's really coming back around. We've done a lot of work in the west end, and we've just continued to do a lot of work in the city of Rock Island. I've watched the new group of aldermen that are coming in. They're gonna do a fantastic job. Mayor Lake Tombs has been a friend of mine for a long time, and I know he's gonna do an outstanding job. It's just gonna be a great council, and they've got some excellent opportunities to get a lot done. So I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity, and just to say how honored I am to have been here for the last 12 years. And PJ said he doesn't know what he's gonna do in the future. I'm not sure. I'm not gonna do anything for the next month. I'm gonna be doing some, a little bit of traveling, but after that, I'll be looking for a lot of volunteer opportunities. I can't sit at home. I have to find some things to do, so we'll be out there trying to do it. So, any other comments?
Mayor Paulie, can you join me at the podium quickly?
I gotta run?
So on May 30, at 10:00 AM at the Police Community Room, the Community Room will be designated in Mayor Paulie's honor, and everyone is invited to attend that. But in addition, we have a plaque to present to him tonight, so it's a gavel in honor of his service. And if Mrs. Paulie allows, you can take this off and beat on it at home.
Item number 15 is motion to adjourn Sine Diye.
移到
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? We are adjourned. Mayor-elect Tombs, would you please come up here? I'm gonna take this little sign off here. I think it's a different sign underneath it. Now, I know you have to be sworn in yet, it'll be a little bit different, but I just want to congratulate you. Here's the new podium, the new doctor for eight years, or 10 years, or 100 years?
Thank you very much. Thank you for the wonderful job you've done.
Very good. Thank you.
We'll begin with the swearing-in at the Office of Mayor. I, Mike Tombs.
I, Mike Tombs.
Having been elected.
Having been elected.
To the Office of Mayor.
To the Office of Mayor.
In the city of Rock Island.
In the city of Rock Island.
In the county of Rock Island, aforesaid.
In the county of, so aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Mayor to the best of my ability.
The Office of Mayor to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Raise your right hand. I, Ivory Dion Clark.
I, Ivory Dion Clark.
Having been elected.
Having been elected.
To the Office of First Ward Alderman.
To the Office of First Ward Alderman.
In the city of Rock Island.
In the city of Rock Island.
In the county of Rock Island, aforesaid.
In the county of Rock Island, aforesaid.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Alderman to the best of my ability.
As the Office, in the Office of Alderman to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Raise your right hand. I, James Spurgettis.
I, James Spurgettis.
Having been elected.
Having been elected.
To the Office of Third Ward Alderman.
To the Office of Third Ward Alderman.
In the city of Rock Island.
In the city of Rock Island.
In the county of Rock Island, aforesaid.
In the county of Rock Island, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Alderman to the best of my ability.
Of the Office of Alderman to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. I, Dylan Parker.
I, Dylan Parker.
Having been elected.
Having been elected.
To the Office of Fifth Ward Alderman.
To the Office of Fifth Ward Alderman.
In the city of Rock Island.
In the city of Rock Island.
In the county of Rock Island, aforesaid.
In the county of Rock Island, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Alderman to the best of my ability.
Of the Office of Alderman to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. I, Dave Geenan.
I, Dave Geenan.
Having been elected.
Having been elected.
To the Office of Seventh Ward Alderman.
To the Office of Seventh Ward Alderman.
In the city of Rock Island.
In the city of Rock Island.
In the county of Rock Island, aforesaid.
In the county of Rock Island, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I'll faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Alderman to the best of my ability.
Of the Office of Alderman to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Here. Call this to order. Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
I, here.
Alderman Clark.
Here.
Alderman Mayberry.
Here.
Alderman Spurgettis.
Here.
Alderman Tulleneer.
Here.
Alderman Parker.
Here.
Alderman Ship.
Here.
Mayor Tombs.
Here.
Item number three.
Report from the Human Resources Department regarding bids for the self-insurance program for 2017 and 2018, recommending approval of the self-insurance package recommended by Arthur J. Gallagher and Third Party Administration Services, and recommending approval of payment to Arthur J. Gallagher in the amount of $379,032 for the insurance renewals.
Move to approve the self-insurance package and approve payment as recommended.
Second. Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
I.
Clark.
I.
Mayberry.
I.
Spurgettis.
Yes.
Tulleneer.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Item number four.
Report from the Finance Department regarding an adjustment to the calendar year 2017 budget, recommending increasing the Martin Luther King Junior Activity Fund by $20,000 in revenues and $21,318.86 in expenditures.
Move to approve the budget adjustment as recommended. Second. Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Yes.
Clark.
I.
Mayberry.
I.
Spurgettis.
Yes.
Tulleneer.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
We went to other business?
Mayor Tombs and new council members, just want to say congratulations to you all. I didn't speak for the other session prior, just because it was very much the opportunity for our outgoing council member and mayor to speak, but I wanted to say it was a privilege of mine in my young adulthood to have served with such fine aldermen and a mayor who really cared about this city and put 12 years of service into this city. So I congratulate them on their service well done, and I applaud the individuals who've been elected here to serve on this council. I think what we will find together as a team over time is that we have a really unique and very capable council here. And as Alderman Hodle had said, our staff where we're at now with this city is second to none. And what I see out there consistently is a broad coalition of citizens and business owners in this city who refuse to accept us taking any, you know, backseat to any other city in the area. And that drives us and keeps us moving forward. And I think the goldmine that we may find in this city moving forward for these economic wins that we want and the businesses and the livability, I think we'll find that if we look where we already have it, we can make it grow better. And I know we've put a lot of resources and attention in 11th Street Corridor, and we need to continue to do that. And we also cannot lose sight of our 14th Avenue Corridor and our 18th Avenue Corridor, where we have an immense amount of businesses and activity, and there's more to be done there to support areas like College Hill. And so I know we'll quickly be moving into goal-setting session in June, I believe, Randy, if I'm not mistaken. And that's gonna be a quick turnaround for us to really start pushing our priorities into the budget into action. So I'm very excited about working with all of you, and I think we're gonna get a lot done for the city.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments at this point?
I'd just like to quickly welcome the new council and thank you guys for coming on to serve. And also, I'd like to piggyback on what Alderman Ship was saying about our former council members and our former mayor. That group of people truly loved the city of Rock Island, and they, some of them took a lot of hits, but deep down, you're not gonna find any individuals in this city that loved it more. So I want to thank them for serving also.
Anybody else?
Just a very brief, few words of appreciation for all the people that took part in the municipal election, from the county offices that helped run the election, to our city staff who took a part in that, to all the people who ran for office, win or lose, it takes a lot of work and a lot of effort to put yourself out there. It's not an easy thing to do. And lastly, to all the voters who turned out to vote for their candidate, and I don't want to forget the people who put on the forums that we all participated in. And while I'm acknowledging thanks to people, I also want to say thanks to the outgoing council and the outgoing mayor, and to all of our city employees who work every day to make our city the best that it can be. our city the best that it can be. Thank you.
Very good.
Yeah, I would like to say similarly, thank you to everybody who participated in the most recent municipal election. Thank you to everybody who supported me in that endeavor, and thank you to my opponent as well for participating. This does not work unless we have lots of people engaged in the process. So, I am humbled on this day, International Workers' Day, to be here, to be sitting at this table. I do not take it lightly, and I will do my utmost best to serve this constituency. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And I would say myself, you know, I don't think I could say any better than everybody else has already, so thank you, and I repeat that, short of, I want to thank my family. They're here, so I appreciate their support up to this point. We do have a gentleman that would like to address the council. Miguel? Yes. Yes, if you could speak in there, if you could give us your name and your address, I appreciate it.
Miguel Morga, 2425 12th Street in Rock Island.
Okay.
I wanted to, one, congratulate everyone who's sitting here today. Congratulations on the election. I think the community's going to be very well-served having you all on the council and in the mayor's office. I did want to talk to the new council, talk to the group. I promised Randy I wouldn't come here and try to burn the place down, but Alderman Parker brought up today is International Workers' Day. And in the city of Rock Island, we have a small group of employees in the Parks Department that have gained majority interest to form a union and engage in their rights to collectively bargain. The city has put up barriers to that since filing that petition. Unlike other cities like the city of Moline or Rock Island County, or the city of Bloomington, where the Parks employees are part of already existing bargaining units, the city's taking a position that somehow there's something different that these nine employees cannot be part of another bargaining unit. They've got to be their own standalone unit. That is a bad public policy. This body is the policymaking body for the city of Rock Island. And so, as all of you are sitting here, I urge you to embrace that role as the policymakers for the city. Look at a broad number of policies and ensure that the actions are reflective of the policy and ideals of the people that are sitting here making those decisions, because ultimately, it is your responsibility. I'd be happy to, you know, give more information at other times. I don't want to take up too much time. I'll go back to congratulating you and looking forward to working together with you guys for a number of years. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. If there's nothing else to speak, we will adjourn. Thank you very much. Need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Too anxious. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now we are adjourned.